Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board of November 17th, 2025. We are meeting remotely. And, just one moment. We are meeting fully remotely. And it's possible for anybody to join us based on the Zoom connection information on the agenda that is available on the town website. We are here tonight. Well, let me start with doing roll call. Hang on one moment. We'll do roll call to start with, starting with Julie.
Julie Moran here.
Carl Schultz. You're muted, Carl.
Carl Schultz here.
Very good, thank you. Sam Corbett? We're doing roll call, so if you can.
Sam Corbett here.
Very good, thank you. And is...
Hold on, Josh.
Is Mike Baptiste here?
Not yet.
Okay, we're done.
So Mike Baptiste is not here yet, is that correct?
Not yet.
Okay. Well, I think we'll proceed with getting started with the first order of business, which is the preliminary business for Project 1525. Or in the website as Project Number Plan-25-15. AD Makepeace Company A&amp;R off Maple Springs Road. So we have Ken Conti here from Beals &amp; Thomas to represent the project applicant, is that correct?
Yes, I am here, Ken Conti with Beals &amp; Thomas, professional land surveyor.
And I guess I need to swear you in as a professional. If you could raise your right hand and swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. So I am going to turn the floor over to you to present. And perhaps, Josh, I don't know if you can put up the drawings? That might be helpful.
Yeah, yep, perfect. All right, first of all, I would like to thank the board for this inconvenience, I guess, of having to hold a special meeting to review this plan as we ask for your endorsement. Again, there was apology, there seemed to be, it was a mix-up. And we're trying to get some administrative things done for AD Makepeace prior to the end of the year. And this is one of the things that we had targeted for to get done as early in November as possible. So again, I appreciate your time and willingness to take a look at this plan and seek your endorsement. So this is a property that AD Makepeace owns off of Maple Springs Roads and Route 25. It's on the north side of Route 25. It's a large piece of property primarily made up of cranberry bogs and old cart paths that it gets access off of Maple Springs Road from other Makepeace properties that's owned. The purpose of the plan is to create two parcels that encompass the westerly side of the property, more as some asset planning, I'll say, that Makepeace is doing. And it's pretty typical for this, you know, this time of the year and what they do with some of their properties is they want to separate out certain parcels from other properties just for their own internal management of the property. We're creating these two parcels, parcels, I believe it's one and two, which are both not to be considered separate buildable lots. And their purposes will be for agriculture and/or solar development. The remaining land, again, is a large property that has adjacent properties that are owned by AD Makepeace and has access to and from Maple Springs Road. There is an access easement over the southerly portion of the property to basically provide access across this lot into the adjacent properties. You know, we originally started this survey for Makepeace when we had one of their legal real estate people identified that this was the subject of a land court. This was a land court-registered property. And it actually extended southerly across Route 25. It had, you know, a larger piece that was on the other side of the property. And when the state came through and built Route 25, the land court never defined this property as a single parcel. And our plan was to do a comprehensive boundary survey of that lot. And then, you know, as time went on, it was determined to create these two additional parcels from it. So we're kind of doing a couple of things, getting a good acreage now on the entirety of the property, and then also doing some, what I call, asset management for Makepeace. I think that's about everything that I can bring forward. If there's any questions or comments on the plans or the property, happy to do my best to answer them.
So just on this sheet right here, can you clarify? It looks like, just to the, I'm trying to find the north arrow. I guess just, I would say, to the east of Parcel 2, there's a property line that continues up on the northerly property line of Parcel 2 and then drops down the page.
Yep.
And so it says Parcel 3 Remaining Land. And I'm not sure I totally understand what that means. Oh, and there's, so there's also that LC Lot 6.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but those are the previous property lines that are going to get removed through this A&amp;R, we're consolidating those. Those are the previous assessors lines that were also land court lines. The property is no longer in land court, but we did show the former lot lines.
So those dashed lines are former property lines that are now a contiguous property?
That's correct.
Okay. So Josh, do you want to weigh in on this a bit?
Sure, so I think when you see, when you look at a lot of the footnotes on these plans that you're being asked to endorse, it specifically says that you're not making an endorsement on whether the lots are buildable. I think it actually calls out specifically that they're not to be considered buildable lots only for the purposes of agriculture or solar development. So when you start to look at an A&amp;R plan, you know, the planning board is trying to determine whether it's an A&amp;R or if it's a subdivision where these are not creating buildable lots. It makes sense to move forward as an A&amp;R. And Julia, it looks like you're muted.
I'm sorry, Jane, with your permission, I just had a couple of questions. As you know, Ken, there are three requirements, three standards relative to an A&amp;R. The first one is the lots on the plan must front on one of three types, public way, private way. And I was trying today to snake my way through the cart paths, the rights-of-way to get out to Maple Springs. And I think I did it, but it wasn't easy. And it's, it looks like that there are some that are, you know, have a decent amount of width, others not so much, some cart paths, all of that. So then I get to, obviously, it meets the minimum frontage requirements under the zoning bylaw, but then the issue is the vital access issue. Can you help me understand with the way these are all twisting and turning? Are these all paved roads? What are they? Are they cart paths?
They're pretty much standard, you know, bog access roads.
Yeah.
Where they're, you know, adequate width to get maintenance vehicles to the bogs to do whatever maintenance they need to do out there or whatever. They're not, they're not considered paved. We're not, we're not asking to, you know, determine that they're adequate frontage because we're not. And it's not, naturally, the two parcels, one and two, don't have any frontage. And, you know, there's not, you know, that standard of access and adequate area and frontage is not really relative to a non-buildable lot. I, excuse me.
Yeah, so. Just one more question, sorry, Carl. You know, then there's the issue of vital access, which is, in your opinion, Ken, particularly when I hear solar, in your opinion, the act, the vital access, which is the third standard, is met here? You feel that emergency vehicles could traverse their way to these properties?
So naturally, I would think if there were solar being proposed on this, it would be under the review of that permit granting authority to determine whether or not there is access. We're not proposing anything on these lots, we're just, you know, proposing property lines. And I think that that determination would come at a, when there is a proposed project. We're not proposing anything by these.
But isn't A&amp;R, isn't one of the requirements at this point that there's vital access for us to approve it as an A&amp;R? Help me understand.
Yeah, I would think if it were a buildable lot that you would have to have that consideration. But again, that's my opinion, I'm not an attorney. But, you know, we're not changing the use out here or the current access that's out there already.
Yeah, so neither am I an attorney, but I would like to point out that in my review of the A&amp;R requirements, I don't believe that use is considered in that at all. And that frontage doesn't really, frontage and access are not really dependent on what the use is going to be, is my interpretation of it.
I agree.
I think that those, I think those two things, the access and the frontage, need to be met regardless of what the use is being proposed or not even being proposed. That, you know, that in order to be an A&amp;R, you've got to have the frontage and the access as well as the area. I mean, the area, obviously, you've met and that makes sense. But I don't believe that we're in a position that we can waive those from an A&amp;R. And I think it might even be by state statute that we can't waive that because use is not a consideration in the A&amp;R framework.
So, yeah, are you?
And I am a retired attorney and I agree with Jane.
So I think, yeah, and I, so.
I'm happy to show you plans that this board has signed of very similar projects, just like this, where we've created the same type of lots, again, at the end of the year, not creating any proposed buildable lots, we're calling them non-buildable lots. And, you know, there was never an issue previously with signing plans like this, so.
Yeah, I can't really speak to that as the chair. I haven't been involved in approval of anything like that. So sitting in the chair position right now, this is what I see before me. So I sort of have to respond to that, I think. And, you know, trying to be fair to you, but at the same time, we've got these bylaws and statutes that we need to respond to. And so I, that's my dilemma here is that I think that without the frontage and the access, that regardless of use, because we're not really talking about the use here at all.
Yes, so, Madam Chair.
Yes.
81L is very clear in what you have stated, that it must meet frontage on an adequate or accepted way in order to be considered an A&amp;R. And I, Mr. Conti, I may have been part of one of those previous reviews and I was troubled by the decision. And I believe that the previous land use planner, director, may have given me bad advice. But 81L is quite clear. And that's, that's fine, it doesn't say that you can't do this. This is a, I'm going to find that this is a non-residential subdivision of land when asked. And I believe that's what the law is quite clear in saying.
Yeah, I'm afraid, I'm in agreement with that. I say afraid because I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Conti, but I just, I feel like we're sort of backed into a corner here, that we've got state statute that's telling us that we can't treat this as an A&amp;R.
You're indicating that the Parcel 1 and Parcel 2, because of the creation of those two parcels, this is a subdivision?
Hey, yes, I think.
Under a subdivision, that's correct.
That, adding the note that this is not to be considered a buildable lot is, does not, it's not sufficient.
I don't believe, yeah, I don't believe that that materially affects the discussion that we're having right now between A&amp;R and subdivision. That's my interpretation of what.
Well, if you were trying to determine whether this is not a subdivision or it is a subdivision, it's one or the other, right?
Right, exactly, exactly. And because it doesn't meet the requirements of A&amp;R, that's why I think that it's got to be considered a subdivision because it's a binary question, it's either this or it's that. And if it's not the A&amp;R, then I think it has to be a subdivision.
There is another person, and I'm not sure if he's in the line. I was going to ask Joshua to let him in. It's our attorney, Doug Ratigan, I don't know if he is in the audience, he should be. I would appreciate it if we could let him in and he could add to this possibly.
John, can you promote Doug to a panelist?
I am promoting him now.
Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, and through this discussion, it's, you know, it can get a little, things can get a little muddy. And I think it's our job to try and bring clarity to that.
And I appreciate your comments and I'm not trying to be negative. I've been noticed for 40 years. And for 40 years, I've had, you know, not to be considered a separate building lot, lots that don't have frontage.
Yep.
And sometimes what we're doing is we're creating a lot to be joined to adjacent property.
Right.
From that property, and I get it, we're not doing that in this case. But, you know, vital access to a non-buildable lot is not something that, quite frankly, I've ever had questioned.
Right, well, and maybe that speaks to practicality, but if we're specifically looking at what we're reading in the statutes, then that would be my interpretation of it. So do we, I'm sorry.
There is some guidance around the fact that the, regardless of whether it's a buildable lot or not, that that in some respects is not relevant to the standards.
Right.
They really are, there are three standards. There's really, as you said, Jane's, black and white, is either A&amp;R or a subdivision.
Right, and that use is not a consideration in that discussion. It is purely binary from my interpretation of what I've been reading. So we have Doug Ratigan on?
Yep, I see Doug, yep.
Would you like, would you like to weigh in, Mr. Ratigan? And actually, can you start out by telling us what your position is? Your...
Madam Chair, just while we're waiting for Mr. Ratigan, I want to voice my concern. We're going to hear from attorney without benefit of attorney on our side.
Agreed.
Correct. And Ms. Moran is not here in a position of, yes, right. She's not here in a position of counsel.
And I think we certainly have the benefit of asking our town council to weigh in. But certainly, Mr. Ratigan.
Well, we actually, Julie, I don't think we have that opportunity.
Not tonight.
Well, we can't, we can't extend this, it has to be decided tonight.
Yep, agreed.
We just lost Mr. Ratigan.
Oh, he must have had a problem maybe with his.
With his connection. We can wait.
He was actually on the town, I thought, he thought the meeting was in person.
Ah, so he's trying to do it from his phone probably.
Yeah.
Yep. Well, we can wait a minute or so and see if he can get back on. John, has he tried to get on again?
I did not see him at this time. I'm keeping an eye out for when he comes back into the meeting.
Okay. Mr. Conti, would you like us to wait for him?
Yes, please. I mean, I can try him on his cell, if I know.
Okay, well, he may be trying to get it on.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. The pitfalls of modern life.
Mr. Conti, he may be, he may have an issue because there is a code. I don't know what he has set up in his system, so I'm not sure what the issue may be.
Mood is.
No, he was already in the meeting.
Yeah, he was in.
Okay.
Hey, they kicked me out when they went to promote me and it wouldn't let me back in.
Oh, you're having problems getting back in?
Yeah, they won't, they won't let me back in.
I don't, I don't see them on the list at all.
And I don't see it as an issue on our end.
There does seem to be a code on the, on the agenda.
Getting in over your phone, Doug?
Madam Chair, I can, I can hear.
I can, let me reboot it and see what I can do.
Okay. Madam Chair, I can hear him well on Mr. Conti's phone.
Yeah, likewise, we could use that as an alternative. Let him give it a try one more time.
I can, I can keep my voice up, I heard it.
I think we're pretty good, yeah.
Yeah, we're pretty good.
Everybody can hear you pretty well, Doug.
Okay.
So I assume you've been listening in on the questions regarding the determination on whether this is an A&amp;R or not, and the issue is with the frontage and vital access, which I've indicated, obviously, that the Parcel 1 and Parcel 2 do not have any frontage and are not to be considered building lots. But the, you know, the question, I guess, in vital access is that I indicated that there's existing, you know, bog roads out there that, you know, trucks and whatever get across there. And I don't know that it's my determination that that's considered vital access or not, it may be, but.
So the concern is that an A&amp;R language specifically says that access and frontage are requirements of being an A&amp;R. And we don't, we don't have those on this, for this subdivision, you know, for this lot breakout. And absent, and furthermore, that A&amp;R does not differentiate by use. That's not a criteria of A&amp;R by the statute, from what I understand. And that it is a question of A&amp;R or subdivision. And because we're missing those two components required for A&amp;R, we're saying subdivision is probably the route we have to go. And additionally, I would say that the road that would be required for it to be a subdivision doesn't necessarily mean a superhighway, you know, it means, it means that, and perhaps the roadways that are in place would satisfy, but they've got to meet the criteria of getting vital, you know, emergency responders into that property because use is not, and maybe you don't need them for the use that you're intending, but use is not part of the conversation in A&amp;R. So that's, that's sort of what the premise is of how we're looking at this. Just, that's our interpretation of what we're reading for the requirements for this.
So I think we're a little bit askew with respect to a subdivision. So first, you know, under 4181L, there is no distinction between residential and non-residential for subdivision. But it's a subdivision if it creates a new buildable lot. That's the, that's the definition here. And I think what is being proposed with this A&amp;R is not a new buildable lot. In fact, that's why the designation of them not being considered lots, buildable lots, is an important one because we are not triggering subdivision review because we are not creating any new lots with respect to this. We are, at best, making a smaller parcel and not creating a new split or subdivision with respect to creating a new buildable lot. There's already an existing lot. Now, what I don't know, Madam Chair, and I would present this to Ken, is if the A&amp;R plan that we are looking at, as we've already outlined, follows prior existing lot lines and whether that plan has been approved at any point in time with respect to those ways by any planning board. I don't know the answer to that because I wasn't quite candidly prepared to address that question. I think, you know, certainly, I think Ken had reached out and asked if there were specific questions, but we can, we can address that. But if, Ken, I don't know if you know whether or not those existing cranberry bog paths, if those were shown as considered a way in other plans?
I believe that there is an existing easement that we defined, that was previously defined, goes across one of those ways, and I think it showed up, and I can't be certain, so I don't want to say that, that it showed up on the original land court property plan that was done. Now, this, like I said earlier, that this, you know, the initial purpose of our work out here was to define an old property that was never actually defined accurately since, you know, the 60s when, you know, 195 and 25 were built. But the overall perimeter of what we're showing on this plan is made up of several assessors parcels and several parcels that are similarly configured that are, you know, don't have, you know, a frontage, they're more or less landlocked and blocked, but show up as existing assessors parcels. So we're basically taking, I think, two or three assessors parcels and reconfiguring them to, you know, different boundary lines, but, you know, basically the same characteristics.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I understand what the attorney said. I don't see anywhere in my reading of the language that says anything about buildable. Only considers whether each lot is, has the legally required front. So I'm not talking about what it says in subdivision, we're talking about an A&amp;R determination. And it has to have the legally required frontage on a qualifying way. And that's what Massachusetts General Law 4181L says. And I don't see the word "buildable" referenced there anywhere. So I, and unfortunately, we don't have anyone on our side to, and I understand, and I was troubled when we may have done this in the past by this very notion. So the board, that's my input to the board. I don't think we have the discretion to ignore frontage and access. And just as a comment, so that, stop, full stop, now a comment. so that stop, full stop, now a comment. Uh, I, I would wonder what the definition of, 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 of building means, because if you're going to build a solar array, you're building on the lot. So that's, that's a full stop.
I believe, I believe if you're building a solar array, you have to get a building permit as well.
So you're, you're gonna, it's so, if you want to put solar on this, you can't say it's not a buildable lot.
Right.
Well, that's, that, that's, that's exactly why this board should take comfort in the fact that this is not an end around on, on your permitting process with respect to this. This is, this is looking at town, uh, a town, a, a way that's already been approved under prior plans and it's shown in the land court documents. If we wanted to change a use and use solar, then it's, then this, this does nothing with respect to moving or advancing bad interest.
I, I, I'm correct. Solar, the, the use, the use is off the table, so it's not relevant. Um, I, I was only talking about the, the general concept of building in general. Um, so, but I, I'm not going to speak anymore and I, it's unfortunate that we don't have advice of counsel. Uh, so Madam Chair, I, I, I move that we find that this is a, uh, non-residential subdivision of land and, uh, not an A and R.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I, I think I have to agree with that based on what I'm seeing as language about what constitutes an A and R and this
So that, that was a motion.
Yes, this does make, uh, so I'd look for a second.
I, I think respectfully, and I don't mean to interrupt it. I'm sorry, this is a little awkward. It's a funny phone call and I can't, you know, get the chair's attention. If I, if I may address Madam Chair for a moment.
Yes, please.
Um, so, so let me, let me address this. What, what is, i- i- if, 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 uh, if that's what you're, you're moving towards, I, I, I would prefer, so let me ask a question through the chair. Um, what is the requirement for a cranberry bog with respect to the frontage in, in the town of Waring?
Josh, can you assist with that?
Uh, yeah, I'll have to pull up the zoning by law.
Has car motion been seconded?
Not as far as I know.
Second.
I, I, I mean respectfully, Madam Chair, there's still discussion regarding this.
Yeah, I think that there is still discussion going on.
Action on this. I, 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 I think we want a clean record because we're going to
Yes, I, I had asked Josh for, for some, some information prior to the second of this motion. So I, I'll entertain Josh's, uh, weighing in on this before the, before we vote.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
This is R one thirty, correct, Josh?
Correct.
Yes, so the use doesn't determine the frontage, the zoning.
The, the zoning district does.
The map, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Taking a little longer to come up than I expected. Forgive.
That's all right.
Forgive my internet, if you would.
Well, we've all been wrestling with it tonight, I think. Again, the pitfalls of modern life.
I, I don't have, I can't because I'm on the phone. What is the zoning district? I can tell you where the minimum frontage is.
It's R one thirty.
I, I have two hundred feet of frontage.
And it's two hundred feet.
Non-residential.
So I, I guess the first question, Madam Chair and through the chair is, is, is there any question that, that the, the lots in question meet the minimum frontage? It, I, I'm just trying to narrow your factual finding so we can understand why
Lots, lots, lots one and
Respect to what you consider.
So lot, lot three has the frontage, uh, on Maple Springs, it appears to me. Um, although I don't believe it's dimensioned from my recollection of looking at the plan. But lots one and two, which are the, the smaller parcels that are, uh, being requested to be sectioned off, um, do not appear to have any frontage, um, or access. That's the question.
Ken, are you at that point? I'm sorry, I can't.
Yeah, yeah, actually, yeah, she's accurate in, in saying what she does. Lot, lot three does have frontage over adjacent property owned by eighty Maypeace. And lots, parcels one and two do not have any frontage, um, and the access to them is over exist, you know, the existing, um, hot roads and any, and any easement, twenty-foot wide easement, um, across the property.
Ma- Madam Chair, could, uh, could I ask Mr. Conti a clarifying question? Did you say parcel three doesn't have frontage on a way? And you're saying the frontage is over another piece of property?
I was just going to ask the same question.
Doesn't have frontage either. It has to have its own frontage.
I was just going to ask the same question.
Right.
Yep. Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'm seeing it.
Parcel three is an existing, it's basically the easterly boundary line is an existing, um, boundary line.
That does, that's not the issue. The issue is
We did not, we did not adjoin it with the adjacent property, um, that Maypeace owns, but I'm just stating facts.
Yeah, but that's, that's not the issue. We're just the only
So that's actually
Make an A and R determination. And an A and R determination is one of the inviolable requirements, as, as I understand it, is it has to have frontage on an accepted or adequate way. And none of these parcels do.
Yeah, no, I, I stand corrected that I see that parcel three does not have frontage. I was thinking, and this, I didn't have it in front of me and I was my recollection was that it was, it had frontage on Maple Springs, but now looking at it, I think it doesn't.
Property owned by Maple Springs. That's all I can say.
Mm-hmm. And I don't know
Not an A and R.
So, uh, Madam Chair, if I can just make a few clarifying points, under, um, Mass general law, there is a difference between what a lot is and what a parcel is. Um.
I have asked that question before and I, I, I'm not sure that that's at all clarified in our, our bylaws, but keep going, Josh.
Yeah, so I don't think it's clarified in our bylaws either, but there is a few case law, uh, supporting the notion. Um, Jane, I'll give you these, uh, for your, for your, I'm sure you're going to look it up later. Uh, Hutchinson versus the Planning Board of Braintree, Perry versus the, uh, Town of Nantucket, and Gifford versus the Town of Nantucket. Um, what these say is parcels can be broken off under an A and R if they are to be adjoined with a different parcel, and that's noted on the A and R, which we don't have that notation here.
So, yeah, so in this instance, thank you for that information, but in this instance, I don't see that parcels one and two are looking to be
Right.
Attached to some other parcel and, and
Maybe in the future, but what's before us, um, does not support that, right?
And, and further, I, I maintain that the A and R language says that, um, you've got to have frontage and access. And it does not, it does not talk about, uh, lot versus parcel. It doesn't talk about use. Those are not considered in those requirements, those criteria for an A and R, as far as I can see. If somebody can show me otherwise, uh, I'll stand corrected, but right now, I'm, I don't see that.
Jane, I agree. Why are we discussing it still?
Yeah.
It's not an A and R.
That would be my contention. I was waiting to hear from Josh if there was anything that he had to say that would
No, I, I would, I would agree with your logic only in the case that there is nothing on the plan that denotes it as being merged with another lot.
So I think that we are ready to vote based on the motion that was made and seconded.
So I contend, I know it's not in the statute, but there's case law that says non-buildable lots don't require frontage. And, and so what this board is, is, is attempting to apply is the standards for a buildable lot. Now, the statute itself doesn't define it, but it does, uh, through implication, because there are exceptions to the subdivision rules, and it talks about the difference between buildable versus unbuildable lots. And the statewide practice in many conveyancing guidelines is if it's a non-buildable lot, then those are, are commonly approved without having to meet, uh, frontage, uh, requirements. Uh, it's period, end of sentence. Uh, the Palant case, zoning board of appeals is an SJC case. There are other towns where their planning boards have expressly addressed these, these guiding points. The Town of Princeton, Town of Easton, all, all allow for, uh, non-buildable lots. As long as it delineated is non-buildable to be considered without meeting the frontage requirements. And I think this board is reading, uh, a requirement for buildable lots and conflating it with non-buildable lots. And, and this is clearly marking these lots as non-buildable.
Well, I would say that to the best of my knowledge, I don't
It'd be like a legal memorandum. I'm, I'm happy to provide one to the board, uh, in short order. Uh, if you want to refer this to counsel, I'd ask you to do that. I, I think that would be the, the least expensive and quickest process for, for us both to, to go through.
I'm not sure I have the ability to continue this.
You don't.
Josh, do you know?
Mm-mm.
That's why we're here.
I think you could continue it with the agreement of the applicant.
Yep.
So we could weigh in with that.
Madam Chair, I, I would, uh, support that if we get whatever constitutes a guarantee, this doesn't turn into a constructive grant.
Mm-hmm.
Because we missed the deadline while we're waiting for this ruling.
Do we have, do we have, uh, appropriate representation of the applicant here to, to be able to do that? I, I'm not a lawyer. I don't know the answer to that.
Counsel still on the call.
Represent, we can ask for a continuance and by implication, uh, set a date, uh, and make that representation on behalf of the applicant.
Okay.
I don't ever remember continuing A and R.
I think this is, the issues
You need to consider an A and R in a, in a meeting. It, it's actually usually handled administratively. And if there are questions regarding it, they're easily submitted in advance. Uh, I, I do note that more than one of you have noted that you didn't have the benefit of legal counsel, and I think you're going down a road interpreting something that is frankly not common practice in Massachusetts with respect to how, uh, non-buildable lots are, are handled for the purposes of A and R plans.
Well, we're a board of volunteers and we're relying on our interpretation of what we read as the statute.
And, and that's why I'm, I'm suggesting that by agreement, we, we continue this. The applicant will stipulate to a, a, a ten-day period, um, uh, to, to hold the deadlines. You do not even need to reconvene for another meeting for the purposes of declining. You can decline without a, a meeting. An A and R be, a plan does not require meeting. So if, if we agree and stipulate to a ten-day extension, uh, and, and this gets referred to counsel and, and we're happy to submit a memorandum as well addressing these points, uh, I think that would be an appropriate use of everyone's time.
That sounds like an appropriate approach. We have another meeting in seven days, so we could take this up after couns- our council has had a chance to, uh, give us some more information as well as, uh, we could have time to review any memorandum from, from you and the applicant.
I appreciate that, Madam Chair.
I'm not opposed.
Madam Chair, uh,
Yes.
Given that, I withdraw my motion.
Thank you. Could I get a motion to continue this to our next meeting on, uh, November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Could I get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, could I get a vote? Uh, Ms. Moran?
I go, aye.
Uh, Sam Corbett?
Nay.
Uh, Carl Schultz?
Aye.
And is Mike Baptiste on?
He's never shut up.
Seen.
Okay, and Chair votes aye. So we have a vote of three, one, one.
Three, one, zero.
Three, one, zero.
Zero, he's not here, so he doesn't
Okay, so three, one, zero, okay?
And, and Madam Chair, uh, okay, I'm not going to say anything. Thank you. Uh, we'll see, we'll see what the memorandum says and
Yes.
Consult with counsel.
Yes, we'll consult with counsel and, uh, review any memorandum prepared or provided by, um, the applicant's counsel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Board, for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion be adjourned.
Do I have a second?
Uh, I, can we have, um, discussion before we adjourn?
On the agenda.
Thirty seconds. I, Ma- Madam Chair, uh, as you and I had discussed in, in, um, general, I, I think that we need to put time on the agenda to have Attorney Bowen, not Monday, or not relevant to this case, but he needs to come and talk to us about A and R. Because we continue to struggle with this and, um, uh, it's unfair if, if we're not, we don't have all the informa- it's unfair to the applicant, it's unfair to us.
Right.
Um, I would agree with that.
All I've got is, is the, the course that I took from the Citizens Planner Training Cooperative and the A and R handbook and the statute. And I, the A and R hand, handbook was written in ninety-seven and is loaded with case law. But that was, uh, ninety-seven was, what, thirty years ago?
Yeah, it had a two thousand amendment, but you're right, Carl. It doesn't
The one I have is ninety-seven, so I, I don't have, so, and I, I am not qualified to research and interpret case law.
Nor am I.
Well, and
So
Nor should I in, as a retired attorney.
I think perhaps we can, could ask Attorney Bowen, uh, to be present at the next meeting, uh, for this case or this, this, um, product number.
I was, I was asking more generally for
Understood, but I'm thinking that if
Training session. What is the town's position?
Well, let's let him, if he, if he comes to our next meeting, he could speak to us on the subject and we can determine at that point whether a, a separate session to go over just this topic makes sense.
Okay, and, and I appreciate the applicant's frustration, but we're doing the best
Likewise, um, but we're, we're doing the best we can with what we've got.
It's a layered, it's a, it's, there's actually layered issues in this particular case that we need to
Trying to be fair to all, to both the town and to the applicant. Um.
Sure, yep, agreed. Mr. Conti.
So now we have, we have a motion on the table to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Undebatable. Had we debate?
No, we weren't debating that. We were just discussing before taking a vote.
Yeah.
Oh, it's not on the agenda.
Second.
You're speaking after the fact. Vote was already taken.
So I'll, I'll take a roll, I'll take a, a vote for, uh, adjournment, Julie?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, four zeros, four zero zero.
Have a good holiday, all.
Uh, we will see you on the twenty-fourth before the holiday.
Before the holiday. See you next Monday.
Yes, see you next Monday.